Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the joint public hearing to order. The notice of joint public hearing. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, August 8, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building for the county of Tassau, located in 211 Central Avenue, Tassau, Virginia, the Tassautown Council and Town of Tassau Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2204, Town Charter Section 3-8, and Town Code Section 23-6, to provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to a proposal for the town to amend Chapter 23 zoning of the code of the town of Tassau in order to add two new uses and supplement the list of permissible identified uses identified in the Tassau Code, Section 23-53, for properties located in industrial, general, and one district. No changes or amendments to the current zoning map are being considered. Copy of this proposed amendments are available for review and inspection during normal business hours, 8:00 AM through 4:30 PM at Town Council Municipal Building and its records here in the above. Do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Questions, concerns, issues?
So you don't have an applicant? You just want to get it zoned?
Uh huh.
Can I add to it?
Sorry?
I'll try to help him out. We do not have an active application. And I'm not so sure you can interpret it to code to say that there's a law that we have to. But I can tell you that there's a lot of laws spread out across that if you don't supply, that you'll get potentially be charged with. So what we're trying to do is just be proactive, Danny, that's all we're trying to do, and provide a place for that's going to have not zero impact but the least impact. You know, obviously a residential area, it doesn't mean our existing town, so.
Do you want more on Towers Street or those?
Probably the community residential area probably would not want it to whole Riverside or any other examples again?
Pines Street.
He's staying in the same.
This is going down his hall.
I hope that answered your question, sir. Any other comments?
And don't be, we do not seriously have an application at all.
And that's for either one of the added uses 31 and 32. 31 being the substance of these treatment facility and 32 being the private store and facility.
All right. We've adjourned the public hearing. We'll resume the town council meeting at 7:00. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thanks for coming to the town council meeting. If you stand with me, please.
One pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely. Let's bow our heads and pray. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, again, we want to take the time to thank you for the blessings that we receive every day. Lord, we want to thank you for the challenges and the obstacles. Lord, we want to thank you for the the days that go by that that we actually have relief. We want to thank you for the challenges, Lord. We want to ask that you be with this government body here tonight and give them the ears and the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest, not only of the community, but also in your name. We ask all of that in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. First on the agenda is the special presentation and request. Manager Day is going to introduce the new recreation director. Mr. Greg, question there?
Okay, now I've got a long, like pages and stuff and book here to talk about grades, but I won't. But I do want to give a little bit of background. I had the pleasure of working with Greg in Bluefield. Greg comes to us with 20, 20 years experience. Greg, is that pretty close?
Yes, sir.
Or more or so. Really excited about it. I know Greg's been to me, several phone calls, and every time he calls me, something about money we need, we need, we need. So I'm really excited about seeing the change and looking forward to it. So Greg, come on up, speak. You've got 25 minutes.
First time I seen him in a pair of pants.
I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to be here in Tassau. I mean, my experience so far has been great. I mean, you all have great leaders in place, Mr. Daddy, and everything is going great. I do have plans to, you know, make changes and do updates and stuff to certain things. I mean, everything's in really good shape. Lincoln Charlotte Park is amazing. It really is. The new dog park out there is amazing. Everything's great. Just do some updates, maybe get some more programming going, such as I've been talking to Pickleball Club, you know, we got a tournament coming up.
Sorry?
No, sorry.
Pickleball?
So we got a tournament coming up next weekend with the big club, so that's going to be exciting. We'll get that set up and everything. I've been talking to people about softball, possibly trying to get that reviled again. I spent a lot of years playing softball, and it's a huge, huge draw. And right now, I know a lot of the tournaments are coeds, and that's the way softball's going. So I've been talking to the people that have tournaments out there. We're thinking about working together, possibly getting a league going again. I've had people mention flight football possibly and stuff like that. So I just want to start getting some programming going again is the direction I'd like to head in with everything. And with the pool, you know, I like to possibly start, I know night swims have been here in the past. That's something I'd like to get going in because I've had a lot of questions about that. Movies at the pool possibly, that's something that's really interesting. I think that's happened here before, and that's a really big draw and a lot of fun. So I'm working on getting a lot of ideas. The citizens here in this town have tons of ideas, and I mean, it's, a lot of them are really, really good. They're not all going to, you know, hit out of the park, but, you know, give them a shot, see if they work and everything, and, you know, so hopefully we can get some things lined out. That's it. Y'all have any questions for me? I'm sure you do.
You've been here what, a month, month and a half?
A little bit over a month, yes.
Because I already played in front of the board.
Excellent. Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything, you know, you're bringing to the table.
Yes, sir.
How much you want to do? All right. Can we get the pickleball started?
It's going to be the 18th?
18th?
Yeah, that's when the tournament is. You can come out and, it's on a Saturday. Colin Patterson is actually putting the tournament together.
Now, where are they going to play? The tennis courts?
Yeah, we're going to put temporary lines down. We're not going to mess up anything with the tennis courts.
Okay.
And who, who knows, maybe in the future we can add a pickleball court eventually and see how it goes. I know the lot does it also, and I've been talking to Matt, well, I've known Matt for years, and I've been working with him on soccer and stuff like that. Yeah, we've been, we've been coming up with some ideas and stuff to maybe get started, and we'd love to collab on it, get some things going.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the introduction of the new executive assistant, Susan Reeves.
Okay, again, I guess it's been two months ago, receiving very good town manager worst nightmare, which was the resignation of an employee that's a right-hand person. Been here for almost three years. Actually, 33?
Thirty-two and a half.
Thirty-five, thirty-two and a half, point five. But I'm really looking forward to the future, and I know that everybody new that comes in absolutely wants to change and better things, and that's usually what happens. But with that being said, I'm excited to introduce to everybody, everybody already knows Susan Reeves. She's been with the town in a lot of capacities, and I know she broke some bad news to the planning commission last night. So we're really looking forward to what tomorrow brings, and she's coming in early. She's going to have the opportunity to work with Robin for several months, and I'm really looking forward to it. So now, we got a speech, Susan, you might begin.
I just wanted to say I'm really excited to get started. Robin's leaving some huge shoes, so I'm very thankful to have the time before she retires to learn as much as you can. I really enjoyed the planning commission and being on the historical review board. I'm really excited to start.
And next is our new business recognition. So we're going to start with Unabellas, Dennis Graham, and Razor Sloan. Sarah Cook, did you come up and tell us a little bit about everything?
First of all, I'd like to thank Robin for keeping in touch with us. She, this has been, we were just getting ready, so she gave us time to sort of get her feet through the door. Basically, we're a cooperative, and we're all women. We're a cooperative, and we have a gift boutique. We make a lot of the things in the gift boutique. We search out local and special handmade items to showcase there. The ladies in the back with Razor Sloan, Sarah and Annie. We have a total of three stylists, and we have Cassie Sigmund, who does spray cans. We have sweets back there, and we're just trying to provide a little bit of everything. We have a beautiful store. We love going to work and being with each other. It's a great environment. We're all excited to be there, and I'm going to let Sarah and Annie tell you a little bit about their services and what they do.
Thanks. So like she said, she has a beautiful gift boutique up front, and then our fancy salon is in the back. Of course, Razor's salon isn't new, but it is a business that we're doing with my sister here, and we're really excited for it. It's sort of like a mullet business up front with parties in the back. But I really love, I have a student working with me. I taught her in my classroom years ago, and then Amy, of course, teaches. There's lots of talent there. Years and years that we have worked hard to achieve this, so we're really excited.
Come on, man.
I don't know what to say. I mean, we do.
They cut, women cut. Weightness only, basically. Color, waxing, only the face, though. We want to make that clear after that first conference.
All right, back to the grid.
So it's not all the party in the back.
Well, we always have welcome gifts and something. And you can have your picture with one of the inappropriate companies.
We appreciate this.
You're welcome. We'd be grateful to get our picture.
Listen to the afterthoughts, baby, I'm sure.
Well, thank you, ladies, for continuing to operate here in town. That's very appreciated. We really appreciate that people continue to pay the interest to having this business.
We're really excited.
Well, thank you very much. So next on the list is After Hours Barber Company, Jonathan White. We're here. Come on up.
How is it about?
Doing what?
Uh, just small, little startup. Ain't got a whole lot to say. Just myself in the building. Do fade, shaves, cuts. Definitely not everything they're doing, but. Yeah, we're neighbors, and it's nice to see that somebody's moved in on our end of town since another one had to shut down. But I have women come in that want haircuts or a dye. I don't even have a sink. I took care of it all. Yeah, that's it. That's about all I got of this. Appreciate everybody's time.
Are you literally after hours or?
I don't know, until seven, sometimes later. I cut correction officers. Usually their day off every Monday or Tuesday. So it's usually my day off, but I come in anyway. So a lot of real world guys, lifelong guys, I really don't have a day off, but I'm not complaining.
Well, thank you very much for opening up here and again taking a chance in our town.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting on July, July 11, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, stateside by saying aye. All opposed, stateside by saying nay. Alright, minutes approved. So next is the approval of the financial statements and the financial report from July 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, stateside by saying aye. All opposed, stateside by saying nay. Financial statement, financial report approved. Next is, we're going to get a committee conference update, financial commission committee, council member David.
We had a meeting last night in planning commission, and we basically talked about the zoning update that we were talking about with the drug treatment facilities in the store. So we were talking about the wording for that, and we talked about Susan resigning as chair of the planning commission. So we will be coming together as a planning commission to look for a, another member to recommend to the town council.
Do you have any questions? Next, we'll go to our unfinished business section, the revenue recovery fund update. Manager Day?
All right, just real quick before you get into your next server topic, I just want to let you know where this was at. You've got like a 2.6 to utilize of the plan of some type of sports-related deals, 2.602, 2807. You've got 81,000 in demolitions, so we're obviously not going to do that demolition. So you've got that money. And the balance, if you take the bowling, I mean, not get a bowling alley out of it, but you've got about 14,500 dollars left. So you've got a quantity of money there. And the interest is 111,000 dollars. And none of these totals are cumulative, so they're, they're single digits of it.
So we can take, if we take the bowling alley out, we actually have 95, 92?
You can actually add all four of those columns.
Okay.
They're not, they're not rolling numbers.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Doug. So next is fence at Kids' Home, council member Fox.
Yes. Rocked this up. Went through several locations in reference to kids that has disability issues, and the fence was out there once and for all. But anyway, the kids need all this. They, you know, if you're sitting out there, you don't have to worry about that much of them running or screaming to the road up toward the lake. You've got the depth, you've got brain issues that they get out there. There's a lot of things that you see these kids that needs, needs to have something for them too. But they need a fence out there to let this grow. And I'd really like to see the council approve this because there's a lot of people that's been asking about this project, the fence. But I do like to see this for the kids, 10-cap, five-year-old, six-year-old, seven-year-old, eight, we got nine, 10, 11-year-olds. We took them to Bristol to bounce. The, there was plenty of them down there. I mean, a big group came in, and I was looking at these kids at the time, watching them. And they get up there on the trampoline and now they're having a big time. They've got security there, whatsoever section. But here, when they're in this area, and it is in this area, town and county, this is a good place for this to be put in, a fence, a good fence with green, a green fence. Won't be no matter what, the fence will be green, green and coated. And I'd like to see this happen, and we have to bring it back. And I want, I want to try to get everybody on board with this because it's good for the kids. If I could take all of the members here to a, to a location where you see this, they might say, yeah, I've seen it. And I just don't want to bolt out the Kids' Home. And Emily, you got something to say about the tripping over?
Yeah, I know I've talked to an individual who is, who has a program that's called TASP, which is Taking Action for Special Kids. They have a program in the summers, usually the entire month of June, that all of the kids that have IEPs in Tassau County schools can go to, and they usually take them around and do a bunch of fun stuff with them, as well as provide them the services that they need to receive through the school. I know my son went to them. He has a speech IEP. He was going to them. He got additional services with his speech IEP, more than they can typically get throughout the school year. But with the children that they serve, a lot of these children do have disabilities, or they have autism, or just various things like that, that they need to be monitored more closely and know that the director of this program has said that they can no longer take their kids to Lincoln Charlotte Park, to the playground, to let them play, because there's so many kids that they have to watch, that they don't have enough adults to station around the entire playground. That prior to this, when the old playground was there, they were able to station an adult at the entrances and exits. So the kids were at least contained, that they weren't going to hurt themselves. They weren't going to bolt off into the woods or to the pool or to the lake or in the middle of the baseball game or soccer game or anything that's going on there. But, and I've heard that Head Start has also said that they can no longer use it because there's not a fence. So I do think that it needs to be fenced. I think there needs to be a large fenced area with benches for the parents or caregivers to sit on. So, and I know right now where the mulch was built up, there's a trip hazard that we'll need to work on because there's a lot of kids, I've seen a lot of kids trip over it. So right now, there's a step up to get into the playground area. And I think I've talked to manager Day about building the, the ground up to where there's not that trip hazard anymore. So we're looking at that too, and also adjusting the, the rampways, I guess, the access points to get in there.
For hand area?
Yeah, so that it would be accessible for all kids, not just eight-year-old kids.
Yeah, you got it. I got four kids. Three are fantastic, but one is autistic. This one was, I can watch three of them just have fun, but they stay where they're in their own area, in the playground area. But when you give autistic, believe, she finds a way, she'll bolt. If she finds somebody to hold hands to and walk out, she'll do it. And that's what we got to look for and watch. I care about these kids. And I hope that tonight we can get that changed to a gay boat and move on with this.
Well, a lot of times you will have the caregiver out there with multiple children. And I know just watching my two by myself, one goes one way, the other goes the other way, and you've got to decide which one to follow. This way, you watch the entrance and the exit, so you at least know that they're in the playground.
Because you're looking at issues of, I mean, you look one way, you look back the other way. Where'd it go? Where'd it go? And not what I'm saying, it's, it's very, I wished I could have everybody that can go with, with us too. Every year, we do it down Bristol. We take them down there and let them have fun. Some of them got brain issues. Some of them got their death. Some of them just, they can't stay in one place all the time. It's hard to keep them in place. And that's, something for the kids, it would be great. And I've seen it over and over and over, and I think we need some help on that.
Yes, I think we need a fence.
Okay, so that's going to be up for our vote to move forward with the.
Yes.
With putting a fence up, so all in favor of, so we're not going to decide what type of fence. We'll crunch the numbers, I guess, right? I see that you have different.
This one is, you got two quotes in there, and I can tell you, I've talked to both of them. They're both four-foot green fence. So I obviously wanted to.
I think council member Katrin had a question about the making it a wood fence to match the fence coming in.
We did that once before, I'm sorry. We did that once before, we had the scrims and the wood. The kids, you know, they grab it and stuff, but they grab it, they can't stick it. It's, it won't hurt them. And that's why I like to save it for these kids.
Yeah. If we do a four-foot green fence, I mean, I'm only 5'2", so it's a whole foot shorter than me. You can still see into the playground, great. And it's actually the exact same fencing that's around the pool. So it's, it still fits.
Okay, so move forward. Go ahead.
Discuss. I was in there last time, and I want to kind of give my point of view on it. I agree that every kid should have a right to have a place to play, that every kid should have a playground. But to me, it's more giving everyone an opportunity to, to play and to have a place to go. And I personally would like to see, see as compromise on this because most of the folks that I've talked to do not want to fence. I'm not saying there's not people that, that.
Yeah, that's the people I talk to do, though. It's just we're talking to different people.
Right. But, and I know there's different opinions, but I would like to see Tassau Avenue completely fenced in, that part. fenced in, that part on Tassell Avenue. And I'd like to, you know, try to build it up and maybe, you know, have more specialty, special needs equipment put on that park to give more folks more opportunity. And we also have the Warhol Park that should be coming in and hopefully that they have accessibility in it as well. Um, but that's, in my opinion, for many of the reasons we talked about the last time this was brought up, I, I would still like to see Lincolnshire left open. I feel like it's safe, it's, it's plenty far enough away from the road, um, it's, it's isolated. Uh, I do like Lincolnshire being open, uh, but I would like to see Tassell Avenue Park revitalized to where it's, got better access.
I, I mean, I think that Tassell Avenue, the better access, the fencing event, have it more handicap-specific, that would be fine, but that the groups that are not able to utilize Lincolnshire because there's not a fence are too big to utilize Tassell Avenue.
We're allocated, I mean, we got the money to do this fencing.
Yep.
It's in, it's ready for us. Now, on the Tassell Avenue side, we'll have to see what, what we can get to take care of it too. I don't mind anything, Tassell Avenue, uh, the Warhols.
Well, at Warhol, we are, we don't have control over what they put there.
That's true, we don't have control, they won't, because they got them out. So I'm sorry about that part, but look.
But I thought you voted on the fence too many years ago.
We did.
We did, but we bring it in back. I want to bring it back to the council.
Just quick.
Yep.
Yes.
Just for the record, uh, may, you may already be aware, but you don't have a motion or a second. I know you're in the second discussion.
I will make a motion that we get a fence at Lincolnshire.
I'll make a second motion to get a fence at Lincolnshire Park.
All right, since there seems to be different, uh, varying issues, we'll do a roll call vote.
Can we do the discussion?
Yeah. The, uh, I think you all, well, good points. Um, since we've discussed this once before and since we have a drawing, um, maybe this could be, you know, we could, we could put it to bed. I do have a question on the drawing that's, that's in the agenda.
Yeah.
And, uh, well, one, first question is, is that the like spec, is that where we're looking at the fence being?
I don't think that that is like a rough estimate.
Rough estimate?
Um, I would actually like it to go closer up to the trees and maybe a little closer to the shelter.
Okay.
Um, but that way you still have plenty of green area that the kids can run up and down the hill. You know, I know I talked to individuals that said that their kids like to run up to the trees to grab pine cones and come back down, so they would still be able to do that in this area.
And then within that, well, I guess that would be helpful to see, because where, where are your gates located at on this fence?
The, the gates are located, you see the walkways that are coming in?
Yes.
So there would be a gate there, a gate at the other walkway, there would be a gate closer to the shelter, so if someone is utilizing the shelter, they could get in easily right there. And there would also be a, a big gate somewhere back in that area, so, um, a mower could come in for maintenance.
So you got three access gates?
Yeah.
And the fourth one, which would be for a mower, probably be a.
It would probably, yeah.
Six-foot gate.
Six-foot gate, I don't know. That's what we're looking for and I hope the council sees what I'm.
When, when you spoke to Head Start, you said Head Start came to use this facility?
I have heard that. I've heard that, I did not speak to Head Start directly, but I have talked to Patty Satin directly with TASS.
I've talked to them, they're for it, they like to see that.
Do you have any, any individuals or individuals in those programs, just to give a perspective?
Um, I know that they service students from all Tassell County schools, so anyone in any Tassell County school is able to go to them and they're, they have that program for the entire month of June. Um, they take them bowling.
But we don't have a, like a volume?
A volume, I would have to ask specifically, but I would say at least maybe thirty, forty-five? You think?
Yeah, possibly more, we didn't, I gotta figure this out, but it's just, I mean, there's a lot of, I should get the true hacker on, on the, on the kids.
I can tell you, when I went, when they were having the, the end of the program lunch, the entire cafeteria area at Tassell Intermediary was full.
That's a pretty big space.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Now, mind you, you may, you probably have some parents sprinkled in there.
Yeah.
Um.
So that's probably fifty or sixty people that can fence that cafeteria. How many events are they having that they wouldn't be able to use this facility?
They would not be able to take the kids out there at all.
So for one month during their, during their program?
Yeah.
And their program is just like one day, like, like during duty hours, like?
No, it's, um, it's Monday through, it was a Monday through Friday. Yeah, it was Monday through Friday. And I know I have a friend, her son went until he aged out at, what is it, twenty-one that they age out of the high school system?
Can I say something?
Sure.
My grandson, he was three when he was at Head Start, he's four now. And my daughter asked whether it was because of the fence back because they can't go down no more because of the fence.
Okay. I've got another question. So with the Kids Zone fence that we took down that had all the sponsors?
Yeah.
Uh, was that retained or is that, that pitched?
I believe it was retained.
We've got the pickets, we've got the pickets.
Yeah.
There's been ideas kicked around, like building a wall and just displaying the pickets, but yeah, we still.
What I would think would be cool, I mean, if you're going to have the fence around, you're going to have a post for each section of the fence where it connects, put those on either side of the post.
The only thing about the fence, the wooden fence, and I'm really, really scared of the, uh, child running up to it and grabbing all the things and getting a splinter.
You got a little scrape of the knees.
Well, it's one of the, whatever, they scrape the knees and all, but you, you see it's.
Hey, they're going to scrape the knees in the playground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
You're going to scrape the knees, I'm tired of chasing mine.
The, the most, so I was also in the name, uh, back when we voted on this a couple of months ago. The most compelling reason for me to, to, well, I guess if we put my vote on this would be for the increased access that is given to people that are in Head Start. Uh, I think that's a commendable call.
I texted my daughter and I said, how many kids are at Head Start? She said there's about seventeen in each room and five rooms, eighty-five.
And that runs there in a whole school year.
Oh, yeah. Uh, they do, Head Start has some programs through the summer too, I think so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's really the bigger volume, uh, because I live on Tassell Avenue. Hey, any improvements you want to make to Tassell Avenue?
I love that part.
I'm going to play down it.
Yeah, it's, it's the increased volume when you have fifty, sixty people, that, that's, Tassell Avenue isn't a suitable accommodations for that. It's, it's suitable for maybe twenty.
Uh, you live in a mall.
For, for Tassell Avenue.
Yeah, but the street, back streets, I think there's a, go ahead and copy it and add areas like or anything. But, uh, yeah, it's just.
It's a three, three thousand square foot lot versus a five thousand square foot lot.
Yeah. Well, I'm still, I wish, I hope the council will approve this because I really, if you really care, this is for kids that are, they know what they're doing, if there's a problem they can tell you, but you get the ones that's, you know, uh, that's autistic, uh, or some kind of brain issue and some of them just walks away and keep walking and here you are tied up with another kid and this kid's already kind of.
Yeah, and they're fast.
And the other three that I had, they, they listen to me and they play and I see them in a group, but it was just when, when my other one was walking out of the park with another lady going to the pool. And that's, I hate to say that, but that's what happened, I swear to that issue and that kind of really got to my, I had a holler at this lady, say, wait a minute, bring the, no. And she looked at me and I told her, I said, bring the girl back. And that's exactly what I was telling her, that, I mean, she's going to take the wrong hand and, and like that.
So, the final follow-up and I'll let the horse die. Uh, if, we would like to put it to bed, you know, be done with this, this topic and move on to more pressing things. The, the fidelity of fence, Dr. Katrin brought it up, you know, the fence that's coming down, you know, statically pleasing, if that's correct? You know, uh, and it's also a cheaper cost by not so.
It's a, it's a cheaper cost material-wise, but you're going to have to have Public Works build it, so that's not any labor in there whatsoever. So, and that's going to take, I talked to Donnie and Donnie said it would take, I can't remember, I said last time, I think it was like two weeks.
So much wood fence?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the biggest problem there was I'm already behind, so it'd be a while for you to get to it.
Right. Yeah, and if we go to one of these other companies that have the chain link?
That's good.
That's the whole thing. That's them putting it up entirely and it's done in a couple of days. Whereas Public Works does it, we have a material cost and in theory it is a lot cheaper for us, but, you know, they get pulled off to do other things or water mains are going to, you know, so it takes a whole lot longer.
If I can interject, that was another as well, and I actually had experience with several children from church and I do see that it would benefit us to, to fence it because of this.
That's another thing, church groups. Yeah, have a church group come out with all of the kids from the church.
All right, so we've got a motion, so, uh, all in favor? We've got one more piece. I'm sorry, I mean, we've been talking about this for a few months now. The, uh, finalized shape of the fence, where you've got it in the, the green, green zone where they can go out and get pine cones or whatever, uh, my recommendation is going to be to square that up so that I, I just, I see the chain link.
Square it.
Yeah, I mean, the, I think that the, the representation of the fence here was a general, general idea that we can.
What I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll take a couple of council members out there that have, and I'll let y'all pick, I don't care where.
But we have, but we have.
With, with the promise, let me figure out a way to incorporate the previous tickets.
That's what I was writing.
Yes, yeah, I definitely want to incorporate the previous tickets. And I think that that would be nice all, because then people can go around to every post to see where their ticket is.
Check, read, go comment. So we'll start down, Councilmember Beasley?
Sounds like everybody's all aboard, we'll say yay.
Okay.
Yay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can get out.
Yes.
Yes.
Yay.
All right, so fence is approved.
Amen.
So next, uh, VDOT recreational access project, Manager Day and Andy Cecil.
Okay, um, as you're aware, it's been a, a number of years that we've been working on our recreational project, there's been some holdups, there's been COVID, uh, there's been other, there's been other ventures or private entities and we're finally, uh, on round two, we bid this project out last year and, uh, I'll ask Andy if he'll come forward and just give you an update on the last process. Andy's been good enough to stick with this project for a couple of years, well, for ten, about eight years now, I guess, but he's bid it out the last time.
Well, thanks. I'm too worn pants.
No, you can't leave.
I tried to give you more.
Okay, well, this is a long and windy road, let me give a, well, some of you are new faces from the last time I was here, about a year and a half ago, so I'll give you a very grizz version of, of how we got to where we are. Um, back in nineteen fifteen. Donated some of that area down there as a recreational area. So the town's operated that field down there for recreation since nineteen fifty and that was a stipulation when they donated land that it had to be used for recreational use. Um, business nineteen came through there in forty-nine, split the property in half and some of the property owned, I guess the south side was severed and of course we maintained what's in the, in the hole there and, you know, many years ago it was a football field, they had tennis courts in there, now it's a Little League field. And some years, some years back, we, we were approved, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, for a recreational access grant, uh, to, to redo that road. And when Todd called me, there were a number of objectives, uh, that we needed to meet and if you've ever been down there, a lot of you have spent some time down there. Uh, number one, uh, because of the back of the dragon, you know, they, we had a conflicting access right there with current access because the back of the dragon, certain times a year is very, very cluttered, there's a lot of traffic in there, so we want to move the entrance someplace else. Number two, if you haven't noticed, the, the bank is rattling very, very badly and, and you pretty much lost your sidewalk there already, so, uh, objective two was to try to stabilize, uh, that road bank and sidewalk. The objective three, if you, I'm sure you noticed, the whole facility's in a big hole and, uh, you know, gravity is under letting and every time it rains, the whole Little League field fills up with water, so there were three primary objectives we were trying to, trying to cure. And I think we, we addressed all those pretty adequately. So last year, after, uh, after about a year and a half or two-year hiatus because of COVID, we, we bid it and lo and behold, there was inflation that nobody, nobody had anticipated. I think Todd bid, or probably stepped through projects about that same time near that, way over the month, so I think the town was pretty much stoked by the inflation that we had, so we tabled at that time and then Todd contacted the back of March and said, let's, let's give this another shot. So we did and what we, one of the things we did right off the bat was we changed our project estimate to accommodate the inflation that we were seeing in the industry, which, uh, frankly is not going to go away, I'm afraid. So anyway, we took, we had four qualified builders last time and we took, and this is called a unit price bid, meaning we have every quantity on the project broken out from activation to sidewalk to field stone. We have like thirty, thirty-five items, separate items that are, that are priced on a unit price basis. So we took the four bids we had last year, threw out any outlined unit price bids, you know, being those that are ridiculously high, ridiculously low, and averaged those and came up with a new project budget. So the new budget we came up with was, uh, just north of seven hundred and fourteen thousand based on the inflation we were seeing in the industry. Uh, this time we had two people pick up plans, two of the, four of the bid last time picked up plans, but we received only one bid. So that tells you that contractors are busy doing other stuff and just really can't commit themselves to, to take it as on. So the one, one bid we had was DCI Shire's out of Little League Field, he bid the project last year as well. And his base bid and the three at alternates we had planned for the project came in at seven fifty, a little north of seven hundred and fifty-four grand. So as part of the process, we had to do a bid analysis for VDOT, so we, uh, kind of break down the numbers and, uh, try to analyze what we think's going on. And it was apparent to me that there are a lot of. And it was apparent to me that there are a lot of, less critical items that they had priced inordinately high. So I contacted the contractor and said, we talked about some of these items. Of course, everything on projects adds together to make it what it is, but some are more critical than others. Like for example, surgery, whether you pit the gallon right is less important, whether the surgeon makes the cut. That's, that's the most important part. So we, we looked at several, several items that we thought that he might want to revisit. And I met with the guy yesterday, very productive being, and we went over those items. And this morning, he contacted me and he removed $40,000 from, from these items. So his revised price is now just under our original estimate. So, you know, Todd, you have to talk with Todd, you guys have to talk amongst yourselves whether or not you can choose to pursue this or not. This is probably the last chance if you want to do this. And I will point out that, you know, on that end of Main Street, that's where the back of the dragon is. They've got a very robust thing going there. They're renovating some housing down there. So that's, there's a lot going on on that end of town that's very, very positive. The one negative is the property that you own, which is the ball field. So as you all are considering whether to pursue this or not, to pursue this, please consider the access. Please consider the condition of your existing road and sidewalk which is about to fall in. Consider the drainage. Consider the fact that as people come to visit the back of the dragon facilities on that end of Main Street, they're gonna be looking dead at the piece of property that you all control. And whether you choose to pursue this or not to pursue it, or any other similar project. I know there are a lot of other projects you are talking about that are very similar to this. Whatever decision the council makes is gonna generate some gravity one way or the other. Bad gravity is people will see what's the condition of the town and think these, that the people running the town just don't really care. And everything's kind of going south. And if that's the case, and you all are here to manage the decline, or you can generate gravity by doing something positive, making something really nice to complement what's going on on that end of Main Street and create some gravity the other way. Where people come through the town and say, this is the place I want to live, this is the place I want to invest time and money. And, you know, that's, that's kind of the choice you have. And those choices supersede the dollar amounts. So as you consider this, please consider the monetary and non-monetary aspects of the decision that you're making. If you have any questions, you don't have to get ahold of me.
You shouldn't have been a politician, Andy.
I'll tell people what I think, so no, I wouldn't have to lose the politician.
So to sum it up, you've got 271,508.63 from VDOT. You're also obligated to $100,000, which is budgeted by the way, and it has been for a lot of years. When this first, when this project first took off, nobody had the foresight to see where we would be at today with this project. But it was, it was well within budget years, I mean, back when it was first taken off. So if we don't do it, there is a high, there is a high opportunity. We're gonna, we're gonna end up paying back $78,000. Now, I will say that there are some outstanding professional invoices. So that number will have some digits added to it, you know, it could be close to $10,000 more to that. So you can, you can figure close to $85,000, $88,000, we potentially will have to pay back to VDOT. There is an opportunity out there that has worked once in the past for me here. And that's to just work with VDOT to try to beg for mercy. So we had another project, which was the Riverwalk project, back in 2013, 2014. Been going on for a number of years, but we couldn't complete it because of the clinics. Anytime you had federal money involved, the odds of building a project anywhere near the Blue Stone or the Clinch has hardly ever happened. But, but we were able to move out of that project without paying a penalty. So the funds would obviously, if we were to move forward with it, come out of the money you have allocated for whichever sports conference you decided to do. So totally up to council how you want to proceed. There are also, there's also a chance, and Andy, you might want to come, I know you and I talked about this, but the Little League field, the corner, one, one section of the post will have to be moved, which will impact the distance to the outfield. But there's other, there's other ways to address that, which is moving the bases to keep that 200-foot distance. So it's gonna take some cooperation, obviously, with Little League. But Andy, comment on that just a little bit if you don't care.
Well, when we originally did this, we had no, we had no sidewalk included in this project. I don't really think we did one. And, you know, when you deal with VDOT, it's kind of double-edged sword. They, they bring a lot of good things to the table, they bring a lot of, a lot of guidelines and rules, regulations to the table as well. So anyway, they, they may have put in a sidewalk. Well, we have, we are, we were already fitting 15 pounds of apples in a 10-pound bag. And we started, now we gotta get 20 pounds of apples in that same 10-pound bag. We don't have enough room really ladder to get this, to get this thing in the way we want to. So part of, part of the project is we had to go vertical with what's called an MSC wall, which is a segmentary chain wall. And to get the sidewalk in, we have to get the four-foot sidewalk in, we got to approach about four feet on the, on the outfield. But, you know, there are ways that you could, and we, and we checked on this, are ways you can twist the field and do the base a little bit. So that, so you can get the full two-and-a-foot distance if that's what you want to do. And we, we met with the Little League guys many times, let them know what was going on because we don't want to upset them. And they, they have yet to respond on this latest round, so I don't know where they stand on it. But, you know, there is plenty of clear space if this thing moves forward that we could, we could accommodate whatever they want to do.
Got any question for you on the sidewalk? So that whole stretch of sidewalk going, is it the nice part of the gas station?
Yeah.
Which is in front of the, so it'd probably be just past the fire department. I mean, if the sidewalk's the issue and it requires you to change the field, why don't you just go to the sidewalk? I mean, you've got some businesses there, you can't move the sidewalk to the other side. Take, take the sidewalk away and then have like we have in other areas where we got lines, like act and place the sidewalk.
We put the sidewalk, we have to have a new sidewalk down this access road.
Okay.
And no way, I mean, there's an existing sidewalk there.
Right.
That's, we're trying to, of course, you're gonna have, at some point in time, towns are gonna have to tear that up, put another sidewalk in there because it's about gone. But, but the sidewalk that we're putting in has to parallel the road we're putting in because it's gotta go from Main Street to the ball fields.
Okay.
So that's the only place we can put it.
And that's, that's a requirement in this building?
Well, that's what VDOT wants to do.
VDOT said?
Well, the reason is, because of the, there, there is some distance between, some vertical distance between where the road is, as you turn in off 460, and, and existing ground. Because of the grade separation there, there are safety rules that they have that say that you have to have so much clear space between the pavement and, and the ground if, if the grade separations are so high.
Okay.
And at some point, we got like an eight-foot grade separation. So that was, that was the way to, to address that probably. They would not have approved it because of safety reasons.
Has there been any estimates on how long construction would take?
Pardon?
Has there been any estimates on?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have 120 days, we have 120 days built in for this, I think two substantial, 150 to five.
But it does not have money built in to move the feet.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's a.
I think that's, I think that's a minor expense because there is, we, we did revise the line item on our, our fencing, if you recall, because just to, just to build our fence out in front of the MSC wall, we had like 100 cent feet of fencing all the time. So we changed that line item. So the line item we have in there is for, for a, a full rotation of that outfield. So that's already in there. But, you know, we have to work with the Little League to twist the baseline a little bit.
Is that the baseball field or the softball field?
Softball.
Softball field.
Okay.
I think that's a better change, I believe, I think it's softball field.
Yeah.
So, so to make a long story short, it's gonna cost the town about $443,000.
There's the question.
Say that again?
$443,000, that's outside of grant funds. And that's also including the $100,000 that we mentioned. That's an additional funding we have to come up with.
Well, if we don't do it, it'll cost us a lot of money.
If you don't do it, it's gonna cost us probably about $88,000. And there might be an opportunity for politics to intervene a little bit, so.
Could you say that about the baseball field?
Yeah. Talked to a lot of people about that field down there. They love to drive by and see that field that they played on so they can tell their grandkids and kids and come on down. And I got a look of all the football players, Tazle and I still drive from I still down to the ball field and get off the bus, you probably saw some of the games down there.
What, the football games?
Tazle, yeah.
If Big Red came to town, it would suck this back to the city.
Yeah, well, it goes on back.
Yeah.
And I've got a book that I got from Todd's daughter. And she said I could have, so I started looking through it. And there's a lot of memories in that book, because there's a lot of memories. And, you know, when they say don't get rid of that ball field because it's, it's good for the baseball game, you can turn into football. So that's what I'm, I'm looking at.
Well, this is not trying to get rid of the field or keep it either way. This is, you know, this is irregardless of what is there, it, it needs to be done. And especially if, I mean, you've got the baseball fields there right now, it needs to be fixed. I'm surprised that sidewalk hasn't fallen on.
Well, that's true, it has.
You need to, I'll see.
Need to fix the sidewalk, whatever you want to do. But we've already put so much money in that Little League ball field. I, you know, taxpayers putting all that money in there, I want to keep it right there because you're getting it fixed.
We're not talking that way.
It's a positive, there are options, you know, go down there, take a look at it, see what we're dealing with. The water's a big thing too, because there's, there's a lot of drainage that comes off the road there. And it's kind of, you got to dump it on the daggone ball field.
Need to fix that part too.
I mean, the last part, yes.
Well, I'd like to go down there and look with you on that field.
Yeah, we, we got, I sent you some pictures of that one, that time we had that big rain.
Yeah, you could stop traveling.
Yeah, yeah, a few people were kayaking down there.
Back in our day, that's what we wanted to put in the water.
Make a decision on this this evening?
Uh, yes, because next month, the, the bid numbers.
Are gonna go up.
Well, I mean, those bids are usually good for nine days. Well, okay, so.
Why move if we do not complete this project? I'm second. That don't complete the project? If we do, we, we stop, do not move forward with this project. I bet you're gonna say, not tonight?
No.
I was like, I agree with your mind. No, we don't weigh $443,000. Well, you do, in the, that money that's allocated to the sports complex currently.
Yeah.
And, you know, we got, I, I think, frankly, I think we need a capital project sit down, like a real conversation about it because we've got one sure training plan that we got created up on this next year. This is a major capital improvement, you know, a prioritized list to say, I'm gonna be moving forward with these major expenses.
Sure, yeah, yeah. That's why we have special sessions to maybe talk about sports complex. We might need to have a bigger special session to discuss capital improvement altogether, which would include this.
But this one's got nine days.
Nine days.
From?
From July 10th.
July 10th.
Right. So a couple, a couple months.
Sixty days.
So you want to table it until next month, give us some time to, we got time to do that, that's the problem.
Well, and we have a special session next week. Is it possible that this can be added on to next week?
Absolutely.
So in the meantime, everybody, gentlemen, look at it.
Well, I'd like to now look at it because I, you know, play down there, you know, it's long, I mean, here's the back.
My, my hangup is baseball, I want to be there.
Andy, we appreciate you, but.
I mean, that's all I have to say.
Any questions? Do you need more?
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Andy. So can you get a motion to table it?
I'll, I'll motion to make it valid.
Any discussion before table?
If we need to, we could include in that, add it to the special session.
So I'm in favor of table it until a special session, states up by saying that? All states up by saying that? All right, so we'll table it and discuss it next week. The Manjore Day, my official at Lincolnshire, which has been a hit from what I've heard.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Greg briefly about the event. I know it wasn't a lot of people there, but the ones that were there, it's my understanding, had a good time. I've not heard one word from the police department, so that's good news.
And all the floats are still?
Yeah, and actually, I actually forgot about the entire, I was gonna put up some light because of that, but maybe I will remember that next go-around. But we had originally talked about two events in August, September, and two events in October. And I just, for whatever reason, being a fisherman, I should have known better. But you cannot do that whenever there's trout stocking going on in Conville. So we had to take the October out. They start stocking trout in October. So we had to take that, those two, those two nights off. So we'll get a good trial run through August and September and we'll reevaluate it. But I just wanted to let council know, I didn't mean to misguide you on those two months of October. So, but we, we have appropriately advertised it. The Department of Gaming and Fishery is well aware of it, the game ward is well aware of it. So I've been in communication, actually today, and it looks real good. There's eyes out there, by the way.
So, uh, you got any questions? All right, I didn't see anything miscellaneous unless I missed it. So next we'll go into our new business section. Todd's gonna give us some update on revised council donation guideline.
Okay, I absolutely do not have a recommendation. I'm not sure where the park made a desire that with cancel. I do know that I've had a number of elected officials have brought up they would like to renegotiate or reevaluate our numbers. It, it was on the agenda last week. I actually got a phone call from a council member in, in Richland who was a little upset that we were changing because they were getting ready to duplicate what we've got. Like, what are y'all getting ready to do? So, anyway, I just put it on there in case, in case council wants to reevaluate it or look at it. I know that there's opportunities out there that have a larger impact on the communities when I usually hear some of the outcry from elected officials. So I'll move forward, everyone, if you have some questions. We can also add into it if you want some time to think about it. Or if you want staff and I to come back with a recommendation based on some type of statistic, we can do that too.
I would like a recommendation.
I would second their recommendation. Yeah, we'll, we'll bring it back with some type of statistical reasons of why we recommend what we're doing. Yeah, we'll bring it back with some type of statistical reasons of why we recommend what we're doing too.
Sounds good. Thanks, Todd. So next is a sponsorship request for Oktoberfest.
Well, you've got in your, in your packet, um, a letter there for sponsorship. And I told them I would put it on the agenda and leave it up to, to the town council on how you want to proceed with that.
Do we know what we gave last year?
Um, I'm not sure they've ever done this before. Um, I'm not sure they've ever made this, this caliber of request.
But we've made donations, don't you worry about it.
Um, you've got a current balance of right at twelve thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars in your line item left.
So because we provide town workers to do that, right? And we provide the office, so we're already getting, having to pay the overtime and all those extra expenses because of the, so take that into consideration while you're thinking this. I mean, I'm not saying I don't want to support and make a donation, but I don't know that I would go for the gold or title sponsor, maybe a lower tier sponsorship.
What should we give last, I know we gave supplies for it.
But do you remember it?
Chamber. Because the first appearance was town to town when we sponsored it.
You know.
In the lifetime, though.
I'm not saying we.
If we sponsored it through them, but since it's gone to the chamber.
Yeah, it's always, this one is already.
Chamber.
I was on the Chamber four.
Okay.
Or I was on Chamber four, I was on, I turned the first one, second one.
Okay.
I just don't remember the, I'm not saying we did, I just simply don't remember the different brackets. I'm not saying they haven't done that.
Do you know how much, how much overtime we, one of these events typically costs?
I can get it too, I can even guess, but.
Well, I spoke with the assistant chief today and he said that everybody in the department works on that line.
Yeah, it's on, uh, we do that old events report, it gives you, it's in here, but it gives you kind of an idea. But I will tell you, it's all overtime.
There'll be a number of that many people we had last year up there somewhere. Stan had it, he has a number of how many people we sent to last year.
Maybe that's the guide, I just don't recall. It was in the report last year.
Yeah, last year was kind of this, we got the report.
Yeah, they had the new locations.
Since our current donation guidelines maxes out at five hundred, and they have a silver sponsorship for five hundred, and they do bring in a lot of people. Instead of going full tier, maybe consider doing, do a silver sponsorship since we're already, but, yeah. I'm just throwing things out there.
I'm okay with that, I mean, I definitely.
We want to help.
Yeah, I definitely want to help. I think this, I've been to this event multiple times and we bring in people from all over. People travel to this event. And I know it requires more, uh, more work, but I think it's well worth it for the town.
I'd like to see more work than this because I brought this up a long time ago, Oktoberfest.
You'd like to see what, sir?
I said, on Oktoberfest, I brought this up because that's what a lot of people want to do. I didn't really know what was going on, but I thought Oktoberfest itself in that. But, uh, to me, if we're going to bring people in like we have been, I think we should go with the gold with this issue.
Well, one thing that we do take into consideration, and Andrew, Dave, maybe you can help me with this. We said we've got twelve king remaining in our line item for charitable donations from the town. Is that, it's August. Is that well ahead of where you are?
You weigh, you weigh, you were, but you had one impact, which was.
Which, back in drag, important. Uh, that's with, I understand what you're saying, come from the Fox, but I think we've got to consider where we, where we are this year and what our budget can also withstand throughout the whole year.
Because we're getting ready to hit kind of a whole lot more.
Sports are starting.
Yeah. I feel like that's probably why, that's just for Oktoberfest, right? Rebuttal for Oktoberfest.
No, this is out of our.
The whole town, right?
Yeah.
Oh, hell no.
I feel like with public works, police department, I mean, I feel like the town is providing a lot.
Yeah, that's why I would say this.
You've got, you've got public works out there, you've got roadblocks, you've got intersectional, you've got police officers, you've got.
So we'll give them a sponsorship and then make them pay for that overtime.
There we go.
I agree with that.
I don't, I don't think that they would like that. I don't think that they would like that. I think that we would, yeah.
So here's, here's my thought. I'll make a motion to do a five hundred dollar donation for the silver sponsorship based off, that's the tier that would put our logo, our, our logo on their printable advertising.
What was it last year?
On their t-shirts and all that stuff we've been on.
I also got that. I don't think they had it last year. They didn't have it.
No, they had it indoor at Lincolnshire.
It must have been.
I mean, this tier event, I don't think.
This is, yeah, it's under the new.
But it'll get us banners and, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's what our donation.
When do they need the money? Uh, yes, when they need the money, it's got to be pretty.
Oh, they'll take it after this. They're going to have it regardless.
But it's going to roll or not.
Yeah, but I like to see it on mainstream, it used to be.
So.
It's going to be in the weather.
Weather, right.
I, I was second to Joe's question.
I was second?
Oh, okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor of providing a five hundred dollar silver sponsorship to Oktoberfest, they said by Saturday night? All of those, they said by Saturday night?
No.
All right, so, uh, we're moving to the next donation request for no off season. Manager Day.
Okay, um, this request was on the last agenda. And I think there was an elected official that wanted some additional information. So obviously, they supplied the documentation that you have in, in your packet. I just need to know how you want to proceed.
I'm still a little confused, what's the, what's the money going for? Is it to pay utilities or?
They pay money, utilities, equipment.
Yeah.
I wasn't here last month, but just looking over this, I do realize they're saying that they're helping with some travel things, but this is a business and I have a problem. Nobody ever gave me money for my business. I had, yeah, they took money, but I mean, I have, I'm happy we got a business here, but we set a precedent of paying people's businesses bills. That's not quite in the direction I'd like to go, given my gravity.
Yeah, the only thing is they have recently established themselves as a nonprofit. So they do have a five oh one C three designation.
They still pay themselves, and I'm not saying that they're asking for this money to pay themselves. They're making that acquisition, but.
I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying one way or the other.
I'd rather, I'd rather donate access to the, uh, medications up to one.
I think Joe brings up a good, a good concept, you know? That is a viable alternative.
You make a motion? I mean, utilities and rent, I don't think they would.
So I'll make a motion that we deny this request in front of you.
I'm saying.
Any discussion? All in favor of denying the request, they said by Saturday night?
One second. All in favor of denying the request, right?
Yes.
Okay.
If failed, did you, did you have a second to, you have a second to that?
To, no, to not.
To not.
We didn't have to make a motion.
You didn't have to.
Make a motion.
You'd be better off on paper to just let it happen.
Okay, because I was going to say, I want to make sure.
There we go.
Better off to show that you make a motion.
So do we?
Do you want?
Well, we have a second every standing minute.
We did.
We got that over.
So next is the first reading to amend the existing ordinance to allow substance abuse treatment clinics and private solar energy facilities with special exemption permit in an industrial general M one zone. Attorney General?
Be an ordinance amendment to existing ordinance, chapter twenty-three zoning art two district regulations, division ten, industrial general M one, separate related to section twenty-three dash fifty-three use. Be our name of council town task, which ended hereby in acts the following amendments to town, section twenty-three dash fifty-three regarding the permitted uses in an industrial general M one zone. Section twenty-three dash fifty-three use as amended thirty-one substance abuse treatment facility with special use permit, provision that the provider cannot be located within one and a half miles of public or private licensed daycare center or a public or private K-12 school, except when said service provided by a hospital licensed by the board of health or the commissioner of behavioral health and developmental services or is owned or operated by an agency of the common law. Thirty-two private solar energy facility with special use permit. All of the uses identified in the section remain unchanged. There are thirty other uses that are in the M one and they will not be affected by this amendment. This is the first reading.
Do we need to set a second reading for next month or?
Do you have to automatically put it, you have to have, so just set on the agenda for a second reading?
Okay, next on the agenda is upcoming holiday for manager day.
Well, I heard it's right on the tear.
Actually, I have a question for you. Okay, so you're saying in December, you want to take off the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth. Why don't you just do the twenty-first and the twenty-sixth?
It's on Sunday.
It's on Sunday. Go right ahead here.
No, December twenty-fifth.
Monday.
Is Monday. So with that holiday schedule, it said it would be closed twenty-second, twenty-fifth, Friday, Monday.
Friday.
Friday, Monday. I'm saying that someone who used to travel to see family, I would rather have the twenty-sixth off. So I didn't have to travel on Christmas Day. But I mean, you can do whatever you want to do, that's, I'm just saying.
I can tell you, thinking amongst a majority of staff, where they, they would rather leave to go somewhere on Friday and not come back to Tuesday.
But Tuesday.
So it works both ways.
Could we do a half a day Friday? Two days? Monday, Tuesday?
How he's looking hard there.
No, yeah, I mean, I'm all, I did too.
Your tax dollars, oh, I got to say. Your tax dollars work. That's coming just from privacy, it's not your turn.
Well, I would like, I would like to make a motion to approve second.
To.
To approve what Todd has.
Yeah. Okay, so got a second, so any discussion? All in favor of approving Todd's holiday schedule, stay said by Saturday night? All of those stay said by Saturday night? All right.
Just one second. Brad. I think as these employees in the back, what they're making, they need a little bit more in their work site. I mean, they, they definitely need to be pat on the back because they don't see this trash stuff on the side of roads. I mean, that's just, you know, I was trying to fill you in on that, but.
I live here too, I see.
Yeah. Okay, so, so the Thanksgiving is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That's the day before Thanksgiving, day after. You've got, you've got it right. Okay, so we got it approved for what you provided. I think what Ms. Davis is saying, maybe Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
I was just asking, why is it new Friday, Monday, Tuesday?
Oh, they'd love to get off on Friday. They would throw the hat on the third day.
Well, and it's what, if you're going to want, I just know what I would have been doing. If it was me and whatever.
Let's move on, so the BML conference, I'll take it.
Okay, um, we have booked five rooms just so we wouldn't lose, and I'm telling you, the.
They didn't vote.
We did.
They did.
Yeah, we did.
I heard, I thought a motion.
A second.
And we all said.
They all said.
Everybody said yes.
I don't have a second, I'm sorry.
I'll shoot a second.
Yeah, Dave's second.
And everybody said I. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's getting late. Um, but good job.
Hard.
It's getting tight, it's getting late.
So we booked five rooms just so they wouldn't book up, and it's my understanding that they booked up. But we do have five, so I just need to know, like, really soon, who wants to go.
Probably already had everybody up.
Okay, thank you.
You said the one room for the Mayors Institute prior is already, good to go. Thank you. So next is YMCA donation discussion, council member Klein.
So, um, this concept that I have is, is just that, it's a, it's a concept and it's in light of the fact that we support the YMCA annually with tax dollars that are generated through a cigarette tax, I think five cents a piece. Thank you. So, uh, well, I'll pass it down to your way, but I think last year it was over seventeen K and this year it's over twenty-five K. So my, uh, concept is a request from council to the YMCA board. It's a request for consideration. And the, the idea would be to create a, uh, off-season membership access for student athletes from Tazlem High School. So if a student has played sports within the previous year, so not every high school student is running up to the Y for the free, have completed a year of a sport and have to have a signed letter of intent from their coach saying that they're going to return for the upcoming season, then they would get access to the YMCA in order to train during the off-season so that they can arrive to their next sports season more prepared and ready to run. A challenge that I ran into when I was in high school, I played on the soccer team and on, we, we didn't have any boosters. So unlike the baseball team and the football team, who have weights that are purchased, I actually got kicked out of the basketball, or the, uh, the baseball field house because I wasn't part of a contributing, uh, member there. So there are athletes, whether it be track or whether it be the men's women's soccer team, who don't have access to weight training during their off-seasons. By creating an opportunity with the YMCA, since we support them with tax dollars, we can allow our student athletes to, uh, one, be in a positive environment and, and train physically so that hopefully our sports programs do better in the end. But it all stems from the support that we already give to the YMCA annually.
The cigarette taxes.
The, uh, does that field house, is that not available to be used by everybody throughout the year?
Yeah, the coach, you have to request by the coach.
The limitations that are on, and I spoke with a, a high school student who's running across country. And their, their access to those facilities is limited by supervision from coaches.
Okay.
And, and that severely limits, you know, what, the ability to have.
I just know the vision for that, because I was on the board that helped build that, was that that was going to be a, a provided off-season term for everybody, not just football. It was supposed to be for the entire school.
And you go to the board, uh, the school board meeting and, and request that, bring it up about the, uh, the weightlifting, they got the weightlifting, they got the gym, they got the stairway. That's, we're running out all the time.
I think it all goes back to they had to have supervision.
They don't have, they don't have a coach.
I mean, they have to have somebody there.
It just came open the doors and said, uh.
Like the weightlifting lineup would be.
I mean, I could see that, but, you know, somebody should be there for, to supervise that. What time they want to do it.
And mean.
You could do it.
You don't have to have a volunteer, somebody's going to have to.
You have to do a schedule and see how that schedule works with this.
So basically, what I'm looking at here is that is a youth membership in the Y is twenty-one dollars a month.
Right.
So.
And there, there are students that don't have access to those types of funds.
Right.
I'll volunteer. Just tell them when to go, okay?
The, uh, I guess Joe and I will, we'll take this for, uh, I mean, you want this to be for anybody in the high school that plays sports.
So the requirements. So, the requirements, hi. You know, my, my position is a request for consideration. Why should put their restrictions on how they seek that? But, uh, by having a minimum restriction of having one year completed, uh, and completing a varsity sport, uh, you don't have everybody in the high school getting access to it. It's not the end of the game. You don't have all freshmen who say, oh, whatever. There, there is a.
Now, you do know we have scholarships there, right?
A lot. How do you?
Yeah.
I'm aware.
That are given to.
I'm aware, and, and a piece of that, well, partially it comes from, from talking to high school students. And it could be that they're high school students, but there's a, uh, lack of awareness on those opportunities. And this could be an opportunity where the light work on the student is, is benefit, but, uh, but, uh, we don't open it up to everybody in the high school. And because it's town dollars coming from our cigarette tax, uh, I think it's appropriate that we open it up to our high school students rather than taxes county.
So, are you done?
Is the suggestion for free access, is that right?
So, the access isn't free, the, the, yeah, for the student.
Yes.
Based on the support that is received from the town task.
Okay.
I got a question. I, I, it's fine, Danny. YMCA has paid off it, hasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we're putting $31,129 each, each year, right?
Well, it depends on how much. It may be five years worth there, it varies. It varies very much.
It depends on how much.
23, annual donation 23.
I think that was the first.
Well.
Thanks.
Like this?
Take it out?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is that. If we're gonna do that, we should be the school board going on this. But, uh, if that's going, I'd rather see our employees in the back and up front to go out and work out anytime we got cost. Of all cigarette tax we put into it, and I don't know about what you would think, but, you know, in future. Better, bigger. I mean, that's what, I just, I just want to put that across.
Maybe we can attack those items separate. So, it's not, not a bad idea.
Well, I mean, and this is just.
Request for consideration.
What do you think about this? And they might come back with something else.
So, you're not looking, you don't believe.
Yeah, no voter. Glenn and Joe.
Can they get back to the board? Okay.
Take it back to the board. That's, that's what I'm, I'm saying. I mean, our, our town has done miracle jobs and picking up what they gotta pick up. And they deserve to take their family out there.
We do get a discount.
I don't want to have a discount.
It's difficult for us.
Want to take all of it, huh?
Tap, isn't it?
Well, I have, we've given all the cigarette tax ever since we passed it, and now they're paid off. And for paid off, my gosh, they could be making all money for them though. I'll just look.
They still have to pay employees and everything.
Dave, the whole idea is not for the Y to go back in debt again.
Right.
They should go back in debt.
Really?
Yeah.
Nothing.
Go back in debt will help a little bit, but that, I don't, I think.
I, I think Mr. Fox's, um, ambition is very avid to book out the employees in the town. I bet we can find a better way to recognize them. They, they get a discount now, and what Mr. Klein is talking about, uh, cancel catch and fees and take it forward. I bet you in time that people work together and find a better way to help that.
I haven't been on board with, you know, uh, the Y and, you know. Helen, they always went up here with all the years I've served, and I'm still fighting, I'm still behind the people in this town, but, you know, if you wanna let somebody, uh, like Mr. Klein was saying about the high school kids, I'd, I'd, I'd love to see them grow to be stronger in the future. I'd love to have championships, but our softball teams have already accomplished that, and that's good for them to have a field of their own to practice on. But the, uh, this right here, I think I'm looking at the employees.
We'll come back, we, you and I just get to talk a little bit, we'll come back with something a little better. Because not all of them are members of the Y. Like me, I promise you, you ain't gonna see me out there working. We'll come back with something that's helpful.
I don't know, just the boosters.
Well, I haven't worked out there. I quit out there because the, the, the lifeguards made a comment that, uh, I had two kids out there with life jackets on, life jackets in. And I wanna run a mile and a half to two miles, whatever, around the track, but I looked down and just, oh, make sure they got their vests on, play in one section. And they had three lifeguards, and one lifeguard said, you can't go out of here. And I said, this is crazy. They got life jackets on, they're standing.
Okay, I think we've gotten way off course from what I kind of maybe finally brought up, so let's continue with it. If you want to say things about the Y, we'll bring it up on the next agenda. So, uh, next is donation request on casual youth football league. Mayor Day.
All right, you've got, you've got a letter in there. Um, I talked to Shay the other day, Shay Moore is the new coach for.
He's the president.
Yeah. Um, so, anyway, he was, he was very vocal about the, the needs of new equipment, things like that. But you've got a letter of a question, man.
And I requested, uh, whatever he's asked for.
So, that was, we're, yeah. So, they got, I, I reached out to Naston today, they said they had 96 kids playing.
Yeah, that's what it says.
So, the max is 400 on that.
Okay, 500.
Max is 400 on that.
500.
Max is 400.
They're voting.
One time you went to 500 for somebody.
Because that was a sponsorship.
I'll make a motion.
For $400.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All in favor of, uh, donation of $400 based by San Isidro?
Aye.
All opposed based by San Isidro?
I have to say aye because I'm bored of sports. Come back next month and go another hundred. Put the candy.
So, uh, next council member, basically, for the historical related topics.
Uh, I'm gonna admit, I was supposed to give a Susan before this meeting to get refreshed on all my acronyms and everything, but, um, I'm, uh, with the historical review board, uh, we've been in discussion, uh, Susan was looking into getting state markers and, uh, for historical, uh, spots in town, and the process to do that, which, which, uh, agency do you go through to get that?
The HR.
The HR. They are extremely backed up, I mean, taking those requests and getting, uh, getting approvals and whatnot. Uh, and also, it's a very expensive process to do that as well. And so, they did say there is a possibility for, uh, locality to do a local historical marker. With that, we would design our own marker and, um, you know, designate the spot, build the criteria, uh, you know, we would accept applications, and it would go for approval, and then we would, uh, take our, our plaque that we would design and have it made. And so, each location, we would deem our historical landmarks, essentially, right? Uh, but what we would like to do with the support of the council is to, uh, have a design contest for these markers. Uh, I wanted to present it, uh, to council so that we could, you know, get, make it a public announcement and get some momentum behind it. But I would like to see some support for, uh, having this contest and, uh, basically coming up with our own local historical marker program.
Well, I like that.
That's very good.
So, basically, the way, the ones that the state have, like, there are several buildings around that'll say the, you know, Spock Strauss House or, you know, whatever. That's what the, is through the state, is that right?
Uh, well, no, actually, the ones that are going to see on Main Street, um, on the buildings, those, I think were done through the town.
Okay.
We put them up, but I can't even remember who was behind it there.
I know that Dr. Mullins worked.
Yeah, they knew, just love them, I don't.
But this would be, um, the markers that you see that have more information, like the white and black markers that are located along the highway. Um, that's more outlines of what these would be.
Okay.
And they would be state recognized if, because this, our markers would have to be approved by the DHR, or is that right?
Right, um, first, we would have to approve, um, our state, our, our local marker program. So, we would have to provide them with whatever guidelines and criteria that we would use to evaluate it, and then they would view that. Um, if we're approved to have a local marker program, then, um, when we receive submissions or make submissions, um, those go to them and they would review them quicker and provide you feedback on whether that should be local or state or national. So, you, you still have the opportunity to have state markers, but this is a faster route of doing it because we can prove it rather than waiting on their final approval.
See, I told you I'm a butcher a little bit.
Good. Just a little bit.
That's why I'm a fast learner.
Right, I think everybody would get behind, it would become a little, some sort of plan for the design.
I think that sounds cool.
There are markers resembling a wayfinder's, that's for the town task.
Say it again.
That's what you want to do.
They have to be sort of similar, but not exactly like.
It would be anywhere in town limits, you know, that someone would submit application for, and then we would approve, uh, we would review it and send it to the state. State would approve it, and we would, we would be able to get the marker made and put it in place.
We don't have to help each other, I think it's exciting.
I would like to post it on the town website, I'll say about the, you know, once we come up with a.
Yeah, we'll post it on Facebook, website, Twitter.
Yeah, thanks. No more Twitter.
No more Twitter.
Alright, so I didn't see anything miscellaneous, so anybody sign into it? No? So, my favorite question.
Councilmember Collins. Alright, it's me. Somebody won't talk. Uh, is, is there any way that we can get some kind of, uh, signs up to that, what's going on in town, uh, like a billboard out there at high school, something like that?
We're actually working with the fire department right now on a digital sign located across from the, uh, Little Lake Field, it's a fire station. So, we're, we're working on that.
Yeah, I think that'd be great for when everybody drives around. And what about?
Real sorry.
Two other places, our four-way area, Business Step.
Well, we got that one built, the spot in front of Hardee's that. We have one of those things.
That's why?
There, there's a big billboard in front of Hardee's that.
I know the billboard, but we need something.
That was a preferred location, um, all, all along, but the fire department's got a memorial element there.
That's right.
Um, so, it's, it's hovering somewhere around the 30, 35,000 dollar bracket. Very expensive. And that's with us doing the, the brick outlay.
Well, that's, you know.
One of the middle schools higher than that.
Wasn't it? It's only one side?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need, we need both sides there. Or we can do one side, go to another location, one side.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely work on one spot at a time.
That would be fantastic, so we can know what's playing. Soccer, football, baseball, track, and all of that.
I don't know who would run into that level. I mean, I guess we can give school access to it, so.
Yeah, I think they'll, they'll help out on that issue. I'm, I'm, I'm missing some games, so.
You don't think that would stay for two?
Yeah, they probably shouldn't.
You call Pendinos and all the games. For a nice place.
Or yes, but you have web.
I dare you, it's gonna be short.
They're even on.
Mayor, Mayor Day, hold on, Mayor Day, one, uh, page, just looking, quick blur.
Talked to, uh, W and L today, they're looking at the first week in October. So.
Push it a little bit more.
Yeah, they're behind, they're behind, saw all the rain, like the farmers are.
That's the payday in the hospital, right, Market Street.
Uh, from the hospital.
Bridge is about.
Okay, VAC mean, right, right?
We're doing markets.
Actually, BZAC's doing, BZAC's doing that stretch, and W and L is doing the approach lab. Yeah, it's crazy. Um, W and L got our project, but it's not supposed to start out the first week in October.
I mean, we could, I'd like to see a lot of pages going on in back streets, side streets. Hey, another thing, can you get, uh, I ain't asking this question, but it might fit in there a little bit. On Cherry Street, you paint that down to the end.
On Cherry?
Yeah.
Well, we gotta finish that drain line for all the, it'll be this year.
Okay, I'll, I'll let them know that. But anyway. Are y'all good back there?
Motion to do your answer.
Second.
You wanna say anything?
Any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor of a journey based by San Isidro?
Aye.
All opposed based by San Isidro?